Are live.
Wow.
That's a new feature.
Yeah.
So press leave me.
Thank you, Zoom.
All right, let's wait a couple of minutes so people can come in. I think I see there is seventeen people at this point.
Well, but most of which are panelists, but they're attending and filtering in, correct.
All right then, welcome everyone. We're going to get started this evening. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, two twenty-one, South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided for each participant for public comment, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Council President Phil George could, whoop, I think we lost him, Phil?
No, I'm here.
Okay, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Certainly, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Mayor Beryl Metler?
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hale?
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Here.
Or Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Or Administrator Hovair?
Here.
Okay, do any of our council members have questions on the agenda for this evening?
Oh, mayor.
Okay, I just want to notice everyone that when we get to the work session for the first topic on the work session, we will have a guest visitor. Assemblywoman McKnight will be coming to speak with us about the legislation she has been trying to introduce in the assembly. So, just so you know. All right, now comes the best part of the whole evening. I get to promote one of our sergeants, one of our officers to sergeant, and one of our firefighters to deputy fire chief. So let's go on with that now. May I have a motion to approve the resolution to promote Police Officer Kevin Schiffner to Sergeant?
No move.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, definitely.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Congratulations, Sergeant, yes.
Councilman Hale?
Congratulations, Sergeant, yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Congratulations, Sergeant. Good to see you, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Congratulations as well, yes.
Okay, so for the last time, Officer Schiffner, do you have someone that would like to join you and your fam- from your family in this?
Let me see, my daughter keeps running around the table. She might want to. Viv, you want to come over here? Come here. Well, he's grabbing his daughter. Can I just say something real quick?
Yes. Please, go ahead.
Please do.
So Kevin Schiffner's first day in this department was the day I found out that I was being promoted to sergeant. He knew before I did, and I had to take him to get some stuff for work, and he had to keep his mouth shut because I wasn't allowed to know yet. So this brand-new kid to our department who put himself through the academy knew something that the person who was trying to show him the ropes the first day didn't know and couldn't tell me until the mayor told me later that day. It's been my honor since then to watch Kevin grow up as a rookie officer into a seasoned veteran and now become the leader that he is. I'm proud of him. I have very high expectations for him, and he knows it, and I expect great things from him. He's going to be a great asset to our department. He'll be assigned to midnight. He'll be running a squad on midnight shift, so you all probably won't see him very much for a little while, but if you do, stop, stay high. He'd love to talk and chat with anybody in the community and reach out and say hello and congratulate him. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Chief. All right, I see that you have an able-bodied assistant with you tonight, and I'm so glad she could help you with this. All right. Officer Schiffner, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Kevin Schiffner.
I, Kevin Schiffner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Sergeant of Police?
Of the office of Sergeant of Police.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith?
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments?
And to the governments?
Established in the United States?
Established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
And you may say, "So help me, God."
So help me.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations, Kevin. Well deserved.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Okay. Borough Clerk, would you please report on receipt of notification from the Volunteer Fire Department of the election of the new deputy chief?
I received notification from the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department of the election of Michael Gershon as deputy chief.
All right. All right. Michael, are you ready for me?
I am ready.
Do you have anyone in your family who would like to join you?
I'm at the Fire Academy, always learning more. They're all at home, hopefully in bed.
Okay. All right then, will you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me? I, Michael Gershon?
I, Michael Gershon?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly affirm?
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly?
And justly.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of deputy chief?
Of the office of deputy chief?
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
I do further solemnly affirm?
I do further solemnly affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established?
And the government established?
In the United States?
In the United States?
And in this state?
And in this state?
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
You may or may not say, "So help me, God."
So help me, God.
Thank you. Congratulations, Morty. Okay. We'll move on.
Mayor?
Yes?
I know Marty is still at the academy and he has classes, so he's free to leave. Thank you so much and congratulations again, Marty.
Okay, thank you for taking the classes, too. Okay.
Oh, Officer Schiffman can leave, too. He can hang out with us or he can be. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thanks again, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to move on now. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and work session meetings held May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, as distributed? So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right then, we're going to move on to our council reports at this point, and I, again, will be going in order of how you all appear on my screen here, and so we're going to start tonight off with Councilman Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a brief report. So this past weekend, Main Street Highland Park was able to do their planting project along Main Street in between some raindrops. So I wanted to say thank you very much to Main Street and to all the volunteers who helped out with the planting this weekend. Thank you very much for that. Also, a reminder that the farmers market is up and running and going full steam, so please come out and support the farmer's market vendors on Friday afternoons. So thank you very much again for that. And I also am very excited to announce, at least from here, that this year we're going to have the townwide garage sale again after a COVID-19 hiatus, which is a very exciting way of maybe getting back to some normal. The townwide garage sale is going to be October second and third. It's a joint project between J.J. Laffer, Century Twenty-One, the Department of Community Services, and again, Main Street Highland Park. Information and signups are available on the Main Street webpage. Again, that's October second and third. So, real quickly, tonight we will be going to the main street budget, and as you can see, they are well worth every penny. So thank you very much to all of them for that. As you can see by Stephanie's background, today is the first day of Pride Month, and I wanted to let people know about a new group in town led by Austin Morial called LYT, L-G-B-T-Q plus Youth Together. They're going to be hosting a pizza party Tuesday, June eighth, from seven to eight-thirty at the Reformed Church. You can email Austin at austin.lytgroup@gmail.com or text him at four oh four nine four four one six four eight for more information. And I also wanted to say thank you very much. You know, we swore in a police officer and a fireman today for new positions, but every year for Memorial Day, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the First Aid Squad, and all of our first responders put together a wonderful ceremony before the noon ceremony at the Doughboy. And, you know, I think it's where all of the departments put wreaths at people who gave the ultimate sacrifice for Highland Park. And the families come out for some of those. It really is a very special traditional event for Highland Park and one that I hope in the future we can try and get some more people out. But I wanted to say thank you very much to the police, to the fire, and to the First Aid Squad for their help in organizing it, and to Elsie for her help and Phil for his help as well for putting it together. I found it a very, very important and moving ceremony to say thank you to our first responders. So thank you for that, for Memorial Day. And then lastly, we'll hear a little bit more about this, I think, a little bit later on, but we've all seen a pretty frightening rise in antisemitic incidents lately, internationally, nationally, and unfortunately locally. As with all hate crimes and bias incidents, it is essential that these are reported to our local law enforcement agencies. They can't help if they don't know. We'll hear a little bit more about this from the chief later on, but please, please report these incidents. I also wanted to let people know that you can report antisemitic bias or discriminatory incidents to the website of the Anti-Defamation League at adl.org. They track these incidents across the world and keep statistics about them as they occur. Again, please report them. You can report them at www.adl.org. I think it's important that we make sure that when they happen, the world knows about it, no matter what biases is put out there. So with that, thank you very much. That's all my report.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I have Councilwoman Canavera. Do you have a report this evening?
I already run mute.
Sorry. As mentioned, it is Pride Month, and this is an opportunity for us to look back on how far we've come in education and breaking down barriers that we still have. The Human Relations Commission will be co-sponsoring the Pride flag raising on June fifteenth at ten AM at Borough Hall. It's also National Great Outdoors Month in June. It reminds us to explore the nation's abundant wildlife refugee, refuge, sorry, refuges, parks, and natural beauty. No matter how you prefer, to enjoy the great outdoors, hiking, biking, kayaking, nature is calling. Pursue the beauty and majesty of the big skies and open spaces the outdoors has to offer. However, the Board of Health wants everyone to remember, while enjoying the outdoors, it is mosquito season. Follow them on Instagram and Facebook for more information to protect yourself. The Housing Authority would like to remind people again about the Middlesex County Emergency Rental Assistance Program. You can learn more about it by visiting middlesexcountynewjersey.gov/rentalassistance. They would also like to pay tribute to Regis Methfin, who was a member of the board who passed away sadly this past month. Food insecurity is still very high. We have two programs to help, the Community Food Pantry, which is open the fourth, the second and fourth Thursday from nine AM to ten forty-five PM, six PM to seven, and also Saturday, following the Thursday, from nine thirty to ten thirty. Also, donations can be made using their Amazon wishlist. Highland Park Gives a Hoot Food Pantry every Tuesday from ten AM until eleven AM, and those donations can be made by mailing a check to the Borough with the memo that it's for the Highland Park Gives a Hoot. Between these two programs, we're serving over three hundred families in Highland Park. The Mental Health Commission has been off to a wonderful start. It hosted its wellness tables last month. It also hosted its first support group for parents of suicidal teens last month. They are working on the schedule for that, and information will be on their Facebook page when they're finished scheduling. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. All right, next I have Councilman Hirsch. Do you have a report this evening?
No report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Nearly one million New Jerseians may be eligible for a five hundred dollar rebate check as part of a three hundred and nineteen million dollar package that Governor Murphy and lawmakers agreed to in September of two thousand and twenty. Once the funding is approved, the rebates are expected to pay out between July first and July thirty-first. The deal includes a five hundred dollar rebate check to married parents filing a joint tax return, or who identify as head of household, or as a surviving spouse. The parents must have at least one child and earn a maximum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or seventy-five thousand dollars for a single parent, or each parent who files separate returns. The rebate checks will be based on your tax filings this spring and two thousand and twenty gross income. You can find more information at www nj.gov. Middlesex Water Company has filed a petition with the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities for a thirty-one million dollar rate increase. The company provides water service to Highland Park and eight additional municipalities in Middlesex County. In the filing with the BPU, Middlesex Water Company said the rate increase is needed to upgrade drinking water infrastructure and other improvements. At this time, we do not know the potential impact this proposed increase will have on Highland Park. We will keep you updated as we learn information as well. Lastly, like all of my fellow colleagues have said, June is Pride Month. Pride Month is celebrated every June as a tribute to those who were involved in the Stonewall riots. Join me this month as I dust off my rainbow flag and attend a parade or festival, as well as learn some important history along the way. And love is love, and that's my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I, too, want to echo that. I want to give a real big thanks for all those who participated yesterday in the Memorial Day Parade, from our police, our fire, our SERC team, Office of Emergency Management, all who came out to make this day possible, to lay the wreath that it was says earlier at the different stations in Highland Park. But not only that, for all those who come out every year in remembrance of the gift that we cannot repay for the dedication that, the lives that were given to give us freedom. As I've always said, freedom, there is, it's not free. There is a cost to freedom, and they paid the greatest sacrifice by providing us what we have, and we all hold them a great debt of gratitude. With that said, I also want to acknowledge that June is Caribbean-American Heritage Month, and with Caribbean-American, we have given a lot to this country. We have given two vice presidents from the Caribbean, both of which are of Jamaican descent. One was Dallas, the eleventh Vice President of the United States. He happened to hail from Jamaica, and we have another one, Kamala Harris, and we're very proud of that. And we continue to give and to give a lot to this country, our beloved country, our new homeland. And with that said, I want to encourage my Caribbean brothers and sisters to go out. Please get vaccinated. Please go out and make sure you share with your friends and family. It's really important because we all want to go back home at some time, wherever in the Caribbean we're from. And with so, we need to be vaccinated. We need to get everyone else vaccinated, our friends and family, so we can start traveling again, and we can start seeing you all. So go out and do the right thing and embrace your new homeland by being vaccinated, so you can go home and visit friends and family. I also want to congratulate Officer Schiff, Officer Schiffner, former, and then Marty Gershon for the promotion tonight. So congratulations again to you both. Also, Junior Cadet Academy, it's going to be from July twelfth to the sixteenth, from eight AM in the morning until four PM. We do have a few slots available, so anyone who's interested, please get the kids registered and so they can participate this year. I'm really glad that their program is back again. So we're looking forward to coming out, kids coming out and participating and learning a lot and getting their civics, I guess, so to speak. With that said, summer is here, and bicycle safety is really important, so please wear your helmet, observe all safety protocols as you go about your daily activities, and just remember that we all need to be safe and we all need to be kept safe. So safety is paramount with everything that we do. Where I'm going to have the chief say a few words in a few minutes about the increase of antisemitic violence that's globally and that we have seen locally as well. So the chief is going to encourage you to please make those phone calls. You know, if you see something, say something. Don't wait. Say, speak up as soon as you see something or you feel that something is wrong. Please don't wait. Call the Police Department. That's what they're there for. They're there to help assist and serve. With that said, our next police community forum was going to be June seventeenth. We will be posting that information on our website and our Facebook, and please look out and come out and join us. Any questions you have, you can start submitting those questions now. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Abrams, and he's going to just give us a few tips and a few words.
Chief?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. First, I got booted before I didn't get a chance to congratulate Morty, as his position as deputy chief. So Morty, for still on, congratulations. As Councilperson Hale and Councilwoman Foster said, there has been an uptick in bias crimes and bias incidents. The biggest obstacle right now for us as a police department is having them reported in a timely manner. There are multiple ways you can do it. You can call nine-one-one. You can call our dispatch center. You can go to the ADL page, as Councilperson Hale said. You can go to the AG's website. We even have it posted under the Police section of the Borough website. It has directions in multiple languages. If you're not sure what to do, it gives you definitions of what a hate crime is versus a, I'm sorry, a biased crime versus a biased incident under the hate crime laws in New Jersey. It explains everything, but most importantly, we have to know about it. I've heard many different excuses of why it wasn't reported quickly, from we don't want to bother the police, it wasn't an emergency, things like that. What starts as somebody saying something hurtful or hateful to another individual might seem not like an emergency, but these kind of incidents escalate quickly. The next time they might spit on somebody, the next time they might shove or punch someone. If we can track down who was committing these incidents sooner, we'll be able to put a stop to it faster and keep everyone safe. And you're not putting out the Police Department. You're not inconveniencing us. That's our job. This is something that we all signed up to do. It's something we're happy to do, and that's helped the community. Please, please reach out when these things happen. If there is some kind of reason why you can't use a phone, or don't have a phone near you, or unable to ask another person nearby if they would call for you, so the police officers can come and take a report. We're getting some of these a week after the fact. You know, and it might be on, you know, captured on a store security camera, which is great, but a week-old clothing description does not help us track down somebody who just spit on another individual or threatened them, or, you know, called them names. And this is across the board. Right now, we're seeing a big spike in antisemitic acts. Over the last month or two, we were seeing a giant spike in anti-Asian rhetoric and anti-Asian incidents. These aren't going away anytime soon. People seem to be getting more bold and more hateful lately. Please report it to us. Please, it's very, very important. I can't stress this enough. If you have any questions, you can go to our website. Again, it's under the Police tab on the hpborough.com, under Information and Resources. Soon as you click that, the first thing that pops up is bias incident reporting in English, Spanish, Chinese, has procedures, everything you need to do. You can be completely anonymous if you have to. Please report it so we can get to the bottom of it. Please report it so we keep the community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman Foster, are you done with your report now?
Yes, I yield my time now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Council President George, do you have a report?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may briefly, congratulations to all of those members of our community celebrating Pride Month. Love is love. Thank you for being part of our community. The big news is that we are going to reinstitute our Bring Your Own Bag program effective July first, like we did the first time when we introduced the program. We'll be rolling it out rather slowly. I spoke with Ms. Weishouse, the chairman of Sustainable Highland Park and the co-sponsor of the bill a couple of years ago, and basically, it looks like most stores are already in compliance and have been for a while anyway. But just a reminder to everyone, the primary focus of this is not But just a reminder to everyone, the, the primary focus of this is not to eliminate plastic or paper, which in many ways is just as harmful, but to encourage everyone to bring their own bags to the store. There's no reason why with the ready availability of the bags either in the store or as giveaways from virtually everywhere, that we can't eliminate all plastic and eliminate all paper. Also, this is a great segue into the state's bill, which will go into effect next year, which is a much broader ban and does not allow for plastic or paper in many circumstances. We'll be getting out more information on that as the time draws closer through Sustainable Highland Park. Remind everyone that yard waste collection is going on, it's on Wednesdays. Please use the recyclable large twelve leaf bags for yard waste, grass clippings, leaves, as you clean your gardens out as, as you go along with your gardening. And speaking of gardening, a group that started with Sustainable Highland Park, it's called Everyone's Farm, sponsored by Wendy Rosen, has started meeting on their own, they've started their first meeting last week. It's a small group, and it deals with everything from growing fairly large plots in New York to, they actually got me to paint an old ironing board and put a couple of herb pots on it. So it's for everybody to try and enjoy a little bit of outdoors, a little bit of greening, but they, the tips that they have for growing in places that you would not expect it, or where you think you can't grow are excellent. We're going to be reviewing two particular ordinances in Public Works this month for, for hopeful introduction later on, the energy aggregation program amendments to allow a little more competitive participation in the audience by equalizing our bidding to make it a better than or as good as commercial rates has been discussed a lot at Sustainable Highland Park and the Environmental Commission, and we'll be discussing the possibility of introducing that very shortly. Also, we'll be discussing a resolution to encourage the state to divest its pension holdings from all fossil fuel related businesses, which I think is an initiative probably a long time coming and a long time overdue. Other than that, I would also like to thank all of the police, fire, first aid squad members who turned out yesterday to join us in saluting fallen firefighters Molly Muck, Graff, and Quinn as we walked the town and visited the sites in a very quiet way, it's very touching. In a very quiet way, it's a reminder of our past. I wasn't really aware that the firefighters were five, almost six years ahead of the town informing, and were one of the two big movements that got Highland Park actually started and separating from Raritan Township. So it was an enjoyable day, but also a sobering day, and I'd like to thank everyone who participated. Thank you, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
No, I don't, Miss Eamonn, thank you.
Okay, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
I have no report, Madam Mayor.
However, Mayor, I should report that the clerk had an internet outage at home, I just got an alert about that. So she's trying to regroup, but maybe the Borough Attorney can advise us on how to, I guess you have your report, Mayor, maybe that'll be the time.
Well, I'll, I'll speak very slowly then.
Yes, I, I see your name just popped back up, so that's good. I forgot we had one more report to go.
We had technical difficulties at my house.
All right, then. Borough Attorney, you said you had no report, correct?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I do have a report. So I'd like to give a bit of a COVID update to begin with. As of the week ending May twenty-third, Highland Park only had four new positive COVID-nineteen cases reported. For the month of May through May twenty-third, we had twenty-two new cases, the lowest monthly level since the beginning of the pandemic. Additionally, the county reports that as of May twenty-seventh, seventy-one percent of our population over the age of eighteen has already had one, at least one of their COVID-nineteen shots, with fifty-nine percent of the adult population fully vaccinated, and that's really good. Highland Park, please keep up the good work, and let's get our numbers higher above that seventy-one percent level. I'm pleased to announce that in response to the latest CDC recommendations and the decreasing number of new COVID cases, as well as the increasing rate of vaccinations, Borough Hall and the Highland Park Community Center reopened to the public today. In the first phase of reopening, visitors to the buildings will be required to wear masks and maintain social distancing. There will be, there will be increased opportunities as well as for visits to and interactions with staff at the police department, the public library, the Department of Public Works, and the teen center. Additionally, as many of you, like many of you, I've been watching the rising numbers of anti-Semitic acts in the country with great alarm. As I mentioned in a statement I issued on Friday, May twenty-first, as the mayor of a community that proudly boasts of a large observant Jewish community that holds strong ties to family, friends, and others in the state of Israel, I want to be very clear. No matter what someone's views on the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, there is no room and no license for any acts of anti-Semitism in our town. And frankly, there should be no room and no license for it anywhere else in the United States. The Highland Park Police Department, as the chief mentioned, is aware of the recent acts of bias and intimidation against Jews across the country, and is actively monitoring the situation. I've asked our police department to give special attention to our synagogues and to be alert to threats to individuals, restaurants, and community institutions. Please, as Councilman Hale and Councilwoman Foster stated, contact us immediately if you have concerns or see any alarming matters in our community, call nine-one-one to report anything suspicious. Next, our state is holding a primary election next Tuesday, June eighth, and there's been one change made in the in-person voting locations for this primary in Highland Park. Due to COVID-nineteen, residents who had previously voted at the synagogue on Raritan Avenue, congregation Ohav MF, they will be voting at the community center. In Highland Park, in-person voting will be available at three polling places on June eighth. The Highland Park Community Center at two-twenty South Sixth Avenue, the Reformed Church of Highland Park at nineteen South Second Avenue, and the Reformed, and the Irving Elementary School at one-twenty-one South Eleventh Avenue. The polling places will be open from six AM till eight PM on Tuesday, June eighth. Residents are encouraged to use mail-in boxes ballots if they have received them, and you can put your mail-in ballot in the Middlesex County Dropbox, which is in front of the Borough Hall Building on South Fifth Avenue. As we continue to emerge from quarantines and mask restrictions, please remember our retailers, service shops, like nail salons, gyms, hair salons, and restaurant owners all rely on you to help them keep their doors open. As we head further into summer and warm weather, you can enjoy breakfast, lunch, snack, or dinner al fresco at one of our many American or ethnic food restaurants. I, for one, will continue patronizing our brick-and-mortar small businesses along Raritan and Woodbridge Avenues, as well as our fun and delicious restaurants. Also, when you're walking around town, stop to chat with friends at one of our many art commission painted benches or street corners. You'll be amazed at all the public art that has been popping up around town, or on our walls and benches, and more places. Whenever possible, I like to conclude my remarks at these meetings by highlighting one of our many admirable residents in the borough. Tonight, I'm pleased to talk about Michael Strzeski, also known as Mike the Crossing Guard. Mike has been serving the students of Highland Park since October twenty-twelve, and he's been assigned various crossing posts throughout the borough before settling on the corner of North Fourth and Wayne Street several years ago. Long before his service to the residents of Highland Park, Mike served the community, the, the country honorably in the United States Navy from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-four, aboard the USS Midway CV forty-one, achieving the rank of Petty Officer Second Class. During his time aboard the Midway, Mike was an aviation boat swain's mate handler, supervising the movement of aircraft on the ship. Mike credits his service in the Navy for the opportunity to sail as far as Japan and Australia. Mike's been a resident of the Veterans Housing Complex in Highland Park since twenty-eleven. When he's not ensuring the safe passage of our children, Mike enjoys collecting military and commercial aviation memorabilia, reading, walking, and cycling. Now, you may be wondering how I know so much about Mike. Well, for one thing, his friendly and dedicated service was pointed out to me by two of our residents who type, who type out and share reports of their walks around town that they entitle Ramblings with Bill and Al. They do send me these reports regularly. They praised Mike as well-trained, disciplined, and caring, and glowingly described his professionalism and personal warmth. So thank you, Al and Bill, for forwarding information about Mike the Crossing Guard, and thank you, Mike Strzeski, for your honorable service to our borough. Okay. We are now ready for our first public participation. The total time allotted is twenty-one minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited during this portion to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed on tonight's agenda, excuse me, please do so at the second public comment session later in the evening. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes have lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if he does not, he or she does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad, or select the raise hand button in this application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name, as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button.
May I begin, Mayor?
Yes, do you have any hands?
I do, I see, just for the record, we have twelve members of the public in attendance and three hands raised at this time. First on the list is Forsberg. I'm going to have to promote you to a panelist, Forsberg, and as a reminder, your camera may flip on for a second before I have a chance to turn it off, so just be prepared for that and get ready. I am now promoting Forsberg to a panelist. And it looks like I will, let's see, stop video. All right, Forsberg, are you there? All righty, not sure what happened, I'm going to, uh, let's see.
I believe she's, they're still muted.
I didn't do that, that's them on their end.
No, I know, I just, they might be able to unmute themselves, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just didn't see them even in the video camera shot, that's what made me think maybe they stepped away. Forsberg, last shot, and I'll, you can re-raise your hand if you come back. All right. All righty, sorry about that, it was a fun Zoom moment. Next up, M Zucker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Zucker, I'm calling, I'm reaching out in reference to Park Town Apartments, eleven Raritan Avenue.
I'm sorry, is that on the agenda this evening?
My understanding is the agenda was in reference to the Business Improvement District budget.
Okay, to the Main Street budget.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I wanted to reach out, this has been an ongoing issue we had. We, we, we're being billed each year for the Main Street budget, and we're happy to contribute towards it, however, that, you know, the budget monies and the improvements that are made are all made to the different area of the town, of borough, without, without making improvements to the area where Park Town is. So, you know, either, I'd like to request either the improvements, whether it comes to the lighting, or the streetscape, or, or other improvements that are made with this funding, be made to this area also, if not, I'd like to request that we be relieved from, from contributing towards something that we're not directly benefiting from.
All right, I'm going to ask Councilman Hale, who has Main Street in his bucket of responsibilities, to discuss that with the Main Street organization.
Mr. Zucker, can I just, real quick, make sure I have the, the place where you are? I didn't quite catch that, your, can you give me your, your, your business address again?
Park Town Apartments, eleven, eleven Raritan Avenue.
Thank you very much, we'll be sure to bring that up with Main Street and, and get back to you as soon as we can.
Okay, I assume you have my, you have my contacts, someone will reach out to me?
I do not have your contacts, I, maybe the easiest thing to do is, is you can, mine are pretty easy to, to get, would you like me to give you those, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's, it's just Hale, Matt, HP. Wait, hold on, let me just check.
That's the old one.
That's the old one, sorry.
M hail.
M hail. Yeah, M hail at HP Borough.
And Mr. Zucker, I think you have my contact, you could also shoot me an email too, and I'll make sure you guys connect.
Okay, perfect, thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, is there another hand?
Yes, there is, hold on a moment. Looks like someone named Max is looking to speak, if you could state your full name and address, please, for the record. You need to unmute yourself as well.
Max Wazatsky, fifty-four North Seventh Avenue, Highland Park. First of all, can you hear me, I'm not sure about the mute.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm not sure this item is actually on the agenda, but Councilwoman Kim Cho Han mentioned the water meter and the water company rates, and this is an item related to that, so I just wonder if I can talk about this.
Max, what I need to ask you to please wait till the second open public comment session.
Okay.
Because we, we like, we need to keep this portion to things on the agenda so that if someone has some, something to talk about that affects the agenda, we can address it, so I'm, I'm sorry, but.
No, no problem.
Okay, thanks, Max.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, are there any other hands?
Yes, Mayor, okay, we're going to try it again, it looks like Forsberg. I'm going to once again allow you to talk, oh, what happened? I just unmuted the wrong person, hold on one second. I just unmuted the wrong person. Hold on one second. So for some reason, the names are bouncing around. I apologize, Mayor. All right, Forsberg, I'm going to allow you to talk now. I'm promoting you to a panelist, so be advised your camera will switch on briefly. So ready yourself for that. And I will. Okay, Forsberg, you need to unmute and then state your name and address for the record, please. You're muted. I'm gonna try to ask you to unmute. Think we're having some technical, oh, there we go. Hello?
Hi. This is Mary Forsberg, three seventeen Denison Street, Highland Park. I believe this is on the agenda. I'm curious about some issues again with the redevelopment plan. What I'd like, I heard that at the planning board meeting that the borough has. Put out an RFP for the. Parking management plan for the traffic and pedestrian and parking analysis. That is supposed to be done before the plan is enacted, I believe. I'd like to know where to find that RFP. Because I'd like to look at it. That's my first question. My second question is, I'd like to know also. Who is currently responsible for negotiating the affordable housing? And the pilot agreements that the borough has with all the new developments. Particularly, I've read some of them, like the one for. Well, Thirty-One River Road, where the pilot agreement is for a hundred thousand dollars instead of two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in property taxes. And the affordable housing. Agreement for, I think it's called the Heritage on Cleveland Avenue. Where out of a hundred and four. Housing units, there are six, or really two. Affordable housing units. So I'm curious to know who it is that is responsible for negotiating those agreements.
So it's not a straightforward answer. In both those cases, there are different. Situations that were going on for Cleveland Avenue, as you're probably aware. That was a court settlement for affordable housing suits that were in existence. For decades here at the borough. So that was negotiated primarily by the courts and then through the. Borough Council at the time had to accept what the courts had put forward as settlements for that redevelopment, for that development. As far as the, any other development that occurs. At this point, and Borough Attorney, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think we've met through all of the plans that we've put forward to the courts. Our affordable housing objectives in the settlement with the existing development. That is currently, either completed or underways. Am I correct?
Correct, Madam Mayor. We have a court-approved compliance plan for the borough through July of 2025. Which means that the borough has met their regional obligation through that date.
Okay, so. So, so to answer your question. Number one, we have an ordinance that requires any new development to have a certain number of affordable units. And we have to follow that ordinance. Number two, any future development that may come along will be discussed at council. Or we council's redevelopment entity meetings. Okay?
Well, that didn't really, that only answered my question about affordable housing. I'd like to know about the RFP for the. For the traffic and parking analysis. And I also wanted to know, want to know about the financial agreement with River, Thirty-One River Road.
Time is passed.
Time is passed. Mary, could you come back up? In the next round of questions, please, and we'll get on to your questions. Okay, are there any other hands raised?
Yes, Mayor, I have another hand. It looks like Shelley Sal. Shelley, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shelley Sal. I live at three six six North Fourth Avenue. On the agenda tonight, I want to understand better. What is being discussed as far as cannabis? And what are the? It looks like there's not going to be anything determined tonight. But can you describe the nature of what the discussion is?
So yes, cannabis is on the work session. And it, when something is put on the work session. It is an opportunity for whatever council committee has been working on something. To advise the rest of the council on what they're talking about. So. I believe. That the agenda item is just to. Share with the rest of the council. The discussions we've had with regarding cannabis and marijuana. Here in Highland Park.
So may I further my question as I have time?
You have time, but I want to let you know that we will be having that discussion a little bit later.
Sure.
So I don't, I don't really want to go into.
I understand. I understand. What I would like covered, if anybody is going to be speaking on this, is. I don't know if it'll be separate altogether, but the difference between opting out. Is it, can we opt out if we choose to do that? On both the manufacturing, I guess there are three levels, maybe retail, manufacturing, and testing. I didn't understand if there's like, is it like, you know, entree? Or is it, you know, you can buy one thing or not the other? I don't really understand the nature of that. If somebody can discuss that and if each end has been discussed.
So, so that is exactly what we're going to be talking about later. There are, I think, six or seven different categories. Involved in the cannabis business. And the Economic Development Committee is going, or the representative from their council.
Thirty seconds.
Is going to be talking about the different options and what we're looking to, to do.
Or what we, yeah. And is there going to be a town meeting or something after some discussion?
Um, we haven't even gotten to that point, and that could certainly be discussed a little bit later.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. Okay, are there any other hands up?
Not at this time, Mayor.
All right, then we're gonna move on to the rest of the agenda. Okay. Right now, we're moving on to ordinances that require a second reading. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the stormwater management ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading? By title.
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex. Amending chapter two thirty, article twenty of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park concerning stormwater management. Was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit of publication are on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, any public want to talk about this?
Just a reminder, you'll have to press star nine or raise button hand on your phone should you want to comment on the stormwater ordinance. Mayor, I don't see any hands raised.
All right, in that case. May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, Clerk, can you please report on advertising the public hearing on the 2021 Main Street Highland Park budget?
The 2021 Main Street Highland Park budget was introduced and approved on first reading on May fourth, 2021. A summary was duly advertised in the Home News Tribune on Saturday, May eighth, 2021. With the public hearing scheduled for June first, 2021. Reports of the budget were made available to the public in Borough Hall and in the Highland Park Library.
Okay, may I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move. Second.
Okay. Clerk, do I need to have an all-in favor on that or, or?
You're just now having the public hearing.
Okay, so I don't need to do the, a vote on that?
Not, not yet, no.
Okay. All right, any public hearing on the Main Street budget?
And star was at nine, and raise hand if you would like to speak at this time. Mayor, there are no hands raised.
All right, then may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did everybody say aye? Okay, may I have a resolution to adopt, a vote on a resolution to adopt the 2021 Main Street Highland Park budget on final reading by title?
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt a jet consent agenda items sixteen A through sixteen I?
Motion.
Don't move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, I am appointing the following members to the following boards or commissions. Sonia Elefante to the Arts Commission. Kamara Umbau to the Highland Park Gibbs-Hoot Committee. Daniel Jacobs and Nasreen Rafiq to the Human Relations Commission. And Quentin Moore and Mario Diaz to the Highland Park Fire Department. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, and thank you to all for stepping up.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, it's now time for the second public discussion session. Each speaker has three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a thirty-second warning. And then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by nine PM, the latest. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. On your key phone keyboard or select the raise hand button on this application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your name and as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
Mayor, we have ten attendees at this time, and I see two, excuse me, two hands raised. I'll call on Forsberg again. I'm promoting you to panelist. And I will shut off. Looks like the video's shut off, so if you could unmute yourself and just state your name and address for the record, please. Mary, if that's you again. You'll need to unmute.
Okay, want to go on to the next person and come back to her?
Sure.
Wait a sec, I just unmuted.
You just figured it out. Okay, good.
Okay. Thanks for your patience, Mary, in coming back to finish your question.
Okay, so, so you answered part of my questions. But I still want to know where I find the RFP for the. Parking traffic analysis that was mentioned at the planning board meeting. Which I presume you would do before you do any more progress any further with the redevelopment plan. And I also am interested in who negotiates the pilot agreements. Specifically, agreements like the Thirty-One River Road where they have a thirty-year. Contract for a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars a year instead of two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in property taxes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Borough Administrator to talk about the traffic study RFP. And then I'm going to call on our Borough Attorney to address the negotiating on different. With different developers. So Borough Administrator?
Requests for the RFP can be made via email or phone to me or Jennifer Santiago. And we will be able to send that over to you.
Okay, and Borough Attorney, do you want to address the question of negotiating with developers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The negotiations, of course, are done by the council acting as a redevelopment agency. And those negotiations are headed up by the special counsel to the council, Mr. Joe Baumann, who I believe is on the call. Oh, he is the individual who would follow your instructions to meet with the developer and come back. And negotiate the final redevelopment agreement, if, as I understand the process. Mr. Baumann can certainly comment further if he cares to do so.
Mr. Baumann, are you there? Ah, there you are. Okay. Would you like to address that?
That's correct.
Any Baumann?
I have nothing to add. That's correct.
Yeah, okay. That's it?
I don't know. I negotiate the contracts as described by council to the borough.
Who, who determines whether the development would not be done without giving an abatement to the developer?
I mean, it was, they file an application. The application has a financial analysis together with a consultant. We analyze numbers, we negotiated, entered into a pilot agreement. It was introduced and adopted by ordinance. Two years ago, a year and a half ago.
Thirty seconds.
Do you use the same consultants for each development?
We've only done one so far, so we had one consultant.
And who is that?
Beacon Planning.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mary. All right, are there any other hands?
I see three additional hands. Looks like Max would like to speak again. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Max Wazatsky, fifty-four North Seventh Avenue. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han mentioned the media, water meter rates. That may be raised this year, and I have some questions about what happened last year. Those of you probably remember that in somewhere around June, July, the borough changed companies. And at the time, they also changed water meters for our house, and a number of us had problems at that point. Before that, our rates, or my rates, had been somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred and eighty dollars per quarter for a number of years. At the point last July, when the meters were changed. We got a bill for four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, for four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We complained and they changed the meters and went back down to a hundred and eighty dollars. So during that time, something happened, obviously. Related to the water meter company, water meter rates, or the changeover. Now, we complained about that, and this happened to a number of us. We complained about that. We complained about that, as you know, that there was a public meeting in November and we were told something would be done about that. Nothing, I didn't hear anything. I wrote a letter in March to the council and the mayor. Again, we were said you would look into it and get back to back to me, never heard anything about it again. So now that the question is, in all this time, has anybody really done anything to look into this problem? Is anybody going to look into the problem? And just where is all this money sitting that we've, this excess money that we paid last year? Just where where is it and what what is happening? So far, nobody has gotten back to us. So can somebody just tell me what is happening, what is going to happen, what may happen, which is where all this money is? Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to ask either Councilman, if the Council President Phil George or the Borough Administrator Terry Hofer to address the issue of the water bills and where the money is. In answer, Terry, you want to take that?
I'll take a crack, I like, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but as I've said in the past, we do look at every case individually. I would kind of, I don't think we have a, I don't believe we have a systemic problem as kind of prior, however, Mayor may continue, I think I'm gonna. But we will look at every situation individually. We did, there seems to be kind of crossing ideas in what Max said, I apologize, I've lost his last name. The Borough went into a contract with Middlesex Water Company in July to do the day-to-day operations and maintenance of the system, including meter readings. There's also what Councilwoman Kim Cho Han was referring to was Middlesex Water Company, just like any other utility does appeal to the Board of Public Utilities from time to time to get a rate increase. That's what Councilwoman Kim Cho Han was referring to and we are going to be watching and seeing what that looks like for Highland Park. I have to take, pull down the proposal and see how that looks. So those are kind of two separate things. I just wanted to make sure for the public that they weren't, I wasn't, I wasn't sure what you're talking about sitting on a bunch of money. If you're referring to the surcharge from, I think it's more than a year ago now, that was to make up for a deficit in the utility, that's what that was. So we were making up an operating deficit. So that's, that money went to plug a hole, I'll put it in a blunt way. So that's not like that was, you know, you know, where's our money? We are trying to stabilize the utility, we are going to be converting all the water meters in town. A lot of them, probably like yours, were manually red, the remotes slow down over time and we are going to be changing those out as soon as we have a contractor identified and bid on. So there are actions we are taking. We've looked at our, we've done an analysis of of our usage and we do not see that there's some larger systemic issue. A lot of them are case by case, individual household issues that we have to sort through every quarter and we will continue to do that. And Mr. Wazowski, if you would like to speak to me, I'm more than happy to do that anytime where I can look, have the opportunity to look up your account and get a little more under the hood of it to see if there's anything else. But I'm glad to hear it sounds like the meter replacement, your readings are back to normal. So that's, you know, all I can kind of say off the top of my head, Mayor.
So Matt, I would suggest that you give Terry Hofer, our Borough Administrator, a call so that she can look into it specifically for you. And we're going to move on now, I assume there are no other hands?
No, I do have, I see two more hands, Mayor, let me just lower Max's so I don't get confused. It looks like Shelley Sal, again, would like to say something. Just state your name and address for the record.
Yep, Shelley Sal, 366 North Fourth Avenue, Highland Park. A few things are on my mind. One is I am about the cannabis idea of, you know, bringing in, whether it's testing or retailers or manufacturers. I am not understanding, I'd like to understand more about the timeframe of this. It, do we have to make a decision of opt-in or opt-out immediately, is there a deadline? And if there is a deadline, like at what point can we, you know, opt-in again? If we wanted to. And 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 I'm saying this because I'm very concerned that we are pushing something faster than it needs to happen as far as keeping or allowing something in because once that happens, we don't have, I don't think there's a go-back. And I didn't understand why the pressure is here to do that immediately. If it's fiscal, financial, I can't imagine that waiting is a problem. So I want people to consider that, no matter what their position is right now.
We will talk a bit more about all of that later on, but the deadline, I think it's August 22nd, Borough Attorney, is that the date?
Yes, Madam Mayor, August 22nd is the date. If the Borough wants to opt-out for the time being and would have to adopt something before August 22nd, otherwise you're in.
Okay, so if we opt-out, there isn't anything that we can't opt-in at another time?
Right.
Okay. I want to bring up a couple of other things quickly. I I'm not understanding, maybe somebody can help me, but for public use, to be able to put something like a PDF of, you know, a project, why that can't be on the Borough website immediately? Is there something stopping us from doing that? I I'm not sure what that's about. If it's time to put it up or, but I would assume anything that we are considering as a Borough would be
30 seconds.
The other thing I want to bring up is that when I see like the 5K race going around town, it is only hitting a certain part of the town and that concerns me. We have so many people who may be able to participate, who want to participate, who would love to be some activity around their neighborhood. And I know I should bring this up with Main Street, but I want to keep this in mind for all of us to think more broadly.
All right.
Community, thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelley. Okay, are there any other hands?
Yes, hold on one moment, Mayor. Looks like Shelley lowered her hand for me. Last hand I see is Michael Klaeser. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Michael Klaeser, 63 Cleveland. My question is in regards, I just want to voice my general support for the redevelopment plan as published the April version, but I have a specific question. Has, I see, I heard that they mentioned that Joe was the special counsel for negotiations, but has the council appointed someone to handle the sort of day-to-day management of the redevelopment as it proceeds, or is that something to be determined as of yet?
So that's a good question. Our Borough Administrator has an additional title, which is redevelopment, I believe it's director.
Okay.
And she will be the person who will be coordinating all of our redevelopment efforts from the municipality.
One follow-up question, since I still have plenty of time. My, in regards to the parking, I actually support a centralized parking location, but I have a concern, which is that it, that the, that the parking be free. Because my concern is that if you charge even a little bit of money for parking, it will force, it will drive people instead to search around our streets to park. And so it will actually be counterproductive. And this is something that, I mean, I've seen and heard different podcasts about these similar things happening in New York and other cities where there is a, there is an actual price to having, you know, paid parking next to free parking because then people just use the free stuff that's on the streets and then our streets are, they already have too many cars on them. So I wonder if the Borough has considered somehow subsidizing parking or having some kind of validation scheme with neighboring businesses, or if that's something that's been considered.
So that's a really good question and we will certainly consider all of that as we start looking into the parking situation here. I don't know, Matt, Councilman Hale, if you had anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I would just say that that there are many parking options on the on the table and in the discussion. We're very, very early in the process, but we certainly, you know, have heard from people about preferences for how parking works. And so we will continue to, you know, discuss those. The parking management plan that we've we've heard about earlier
30 seconds.
involves bringing, you know, parking experts to help us weed through the various ways of of structuring parking, but that's certainly in the mix and we appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you, everyone, I will lower my hand.
Thank you. Okay, then.
That would be all hand-wise.
And so we're going to take a five-minute recess at this point. I noticed that Assemblywoman McKnight is already with us. So Assemblywoman, if you're listening, just bear with us for this five-minute break and we will, we hope to see you back here. It is now 8:22, so at 8:27, let's all reconvene here. I already told her, Mayor.
Sorry, thank you.
I already informed her that we're running a little behind. Okay, wonderful, thank you.
There you have the woman.
See you soon.
Hello. Everyone.
How are you, Matt? You're muted.
Hey, what's going on?
Not much, just very, very tired.
Matt, we have to stop coordinating wardrobes.
Are we, are we coordinating?
I almost wore that shirt this night, I had that same shirt. I went with a smaller check, so.
Boy, my face would have been red if we had been wearing the same shirt.
Two Matts, I imagine.
Would have been terrible, wouldn't it?
I don't know what I would have done.
I know you're nervous about stuff like that, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, get the drips going.
I should just wear my, I have a variety of Highland Park shirt, 5K shirts, actually, since the 5K was mentioned. There's a variety of 5K.
Is the 5K happening, did I miss out on something?
No, no.
I was gonna say, I was like, I'm the last to know around here.
Couldn't do it because with, until very recently, there wasn't a, we weren't allowed to have big congregations like that.
No, that's what I figured, like, oh, how did you?
The last minute, so, you know.
We'll get back on track.
Yeah.
Becca, it's nice to hear your voice.
I'm here lurking. I'm wearing the same shirt as Matt Hirsch, so, you know, I'm putting my screen off.
Were they holiday gifts for me?
We're starting a movement. The Check Shirt Club.
Check Shirt Movement.
The purple.
Congratulations, we're back on your budget, well done.
Oh, thanks.
And thank you for all you do for the community.
Sam wants to say hi.
Hi, Sam.
Hi, Sam.
Did you like your chocolate?
Awesome. I did want to just mention actually one, it was not really a Borough thing, but last, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, there was an amazing porch fest.
Yes.
That was run by some really great volunteers and geez, this is why it was not in my report, because I can't remember the organization.
Who is my neighbor?
Who's my neighbor, thank you, thank you, thank you, Becca. And it was just, it was really incredible and this this picture behind me was actually one of the shows. It was, it was local bands just playing all over town, some simultaneously and people were just coming out and
It was huge.
Supporting local music, it was awesome. I had a show, I felt like, I felt like Billy Graham, not, not the, not the religious guy, but the concert promoter hosting a concert on my porch and it was great. We had Zero for Contact, Morgan Chen, their local act, and it was very cool. And Terry, Gary, Gary Kaplan, thank you, Gary Kaplan.
They should do that more than once a year.
It was
They're working on it, they're already thinking about it.
Yeah, it would be, it was great.
Sam, I love your shirt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, when we come back, we're just gonna ask, we're gonna have Assemblywoman McKnight speak? Yes, she's the first. So she's been on here for a half an hour now. Yeah, yeah, she's first on the work session. Great. Are we all back? Missing a few. Here comes Ed. Is John here?
I'm here.
Okay.
We have Joe, I attempted brief tonight.
Matt, that was the best report ever.
As the person who has to type that up, you can appreciate.
Well, the stuff that, the stuff that I would be talking about is coming up on the work session, so.
So who are we missing? Stephanie?
Stephanie.
Maybe Rebecca might want to mute herself?
Yeah, sticking that.
Yeah.
Do you want me to demote you to attendee status, Rebecca? I can do that. I figured you out. We can leave her there, as long as she can.
There's Stephanie, okay. Okay, so is the Assemblywoman on with us? Yeah, she's still on. Okay, can we promote her to a panelist?
She's on, now she has
She's already on.
She just asked on mute.
Ah, there you are.
Hi, good evening.
So much for joining us. Welcome to Highland Park.
Thank you, thank you, I'm talking to you from North Carolina. Down here with my dad, caring for him, so.
Yeah. Well, say hi to your dad from Highland Park.
I will, I will, thank you.
And so I don't want to keep you too long, I just want everyone on the council to know that you graciously accepted our invitation to talk about your legislation regarding civilian review boards. I have an Equity Advisory Council that is working on this for us here in Highland Park and I thought it would be important for the council members to to learn a little bit more about your legislation, what's been going on around the state and where you think we are in terms, when I say we, I mean the state, in terms of CCRBs.
So I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to everyone in reference to the CCRB. So the CCRB, it came about after the killing of Judge Floyd. I wanted to do something to make sure that, you know, the killing, those, that type of killing and excessive force is not used and also I want is not used. And also, I want to make sure that the civilians of New Jersey have a say in holding bad police officers accountable. So I work with my team and discovered that Mayor Roz Baraka from Newark, he's been, him and his team has been fighting this fight for many years. And I know the Supreme Court had, the Superior Court has knocked them down and stated that the state of New Jersey must give them subpoena power in order to put teeth into the CCRB. So my piece of legislation has passed through the committee. And what is, what it is, is a three-level CCRB, which we will have a CCRB on a municipal level. If a municipal don't want to have one, we can have one on the county level because we have sheriffs. And then we can also have one on the state level because we have state troopers. So each level of, each level can have a CCRB. And the makeup of the CCRB will consist of, as a community, as well as civilians. And that makeup will have to go into the, the recommendations will go into the, the mayor. And the mayor will, will then, you know, speak with the council, and the council will have to approve those recommendations. And, um, if it's a criminal law, if it's a criminal complaint, then the CCRB cannot do anything because, you know, it's criminal and federal law is where it's handling that. So once the CCRB is enacted, if there's any type of force, there's a list of items that we have. You have this, this group of people who will review the case. And they will actually come and come with some findings. They will have subpoena power because this is what my legislation is. I want them to have subpoena power. And I also would like for them to run concurrent investigation as well as with the IA. So they can do one as well as the IA. And then we will use the Attorney General rules and guidelines on how they, you know, switch documents, then talk to each other. And the CCRB team can then present recommendations to, to the IA, to the police for, you know, for those recommendations to come through. And if those recommendations are not, you know, are not used, then the police will have to let us know why they're not using those recommendations. So it's a working, you know, it's a working relationship. No group has more power than the other group. And the AG guidelines will come into play. And also, the CCRB can also look at the, the rulings that, that the cops have, like the different rulings that they have, like the disciplinary actions. And they can also come up with some recommendations on what those disciplinary actions should be. And again, they don't have to go with them, but we will have to get wording from the police to let us know why you're not going with those recommendations. Or if they are gonna go with those recommendations, then by all means. So the, the main brunt of the CCRB is to include civilians, citizens from each municipality to provide accountability, transparency. And this is not to, you know, this is not an anti-police legislation, just to let you know that I want to put that on a record. This is not an anti-police piece of legislation. This piece of legislation is for accountability, transparency, and to make sure that the community and the police to build that relationship. Because if you just look at, you know, past history, there's been some bad apples that has happened inside of our community and nothing has occurred. So we need to just hold the feet to the fire and have a civilian review board. And I am happy that Mayor Roz Baraka is on board. We have Jersey City, I've been working with that council body in reference to a CCRB. And then Councilwoman Forster reached out to me to come here to talk to you all tonight. And I'm willing to answer any questions that you have. We do have the bill, we can share the bill with you. I've been working with ACLU, community leaders, activists, advocates on getting this piece of legislation. Where is that now? It also has a hundred, I believe it's eight hundred thousand dollars attached to it to help municipalities build their, um, their CCRB. And if we need to put more money to it, just let me know. It's still, you know, going through the motion. It did pass committee. Now it's in the appropriations. But we still can make some changes to it. And I'm still working with advocates and, and activists and police unions and city officials on making this bill as strong as possible.
So I have a question for you, and then I'm going to ask the other council people to raise their hands if they have some questions. Of the composition of the CCRB, and I've been talking to Mayor Baraka, Mayor Philip, and the former mayor of Maplewood also has been involved in some of this. All, all, none of, no, nobody in Middlesex County yet. But, um, the, I, there's concern that the, that the composition of the CCRB be spelled out, when I say composition, I mean, you know, who, are there, are there requirements in terms of professional background, et cetera, et cetera, for the members of the CCRB?
So your question is you want to know that makeup? So in the bill, let me just pull it up. What I did not want the bill to, to have is to directly say, these are the people that you must have. What the bill says, it has to be someone with, like, social justice, their background. If they have, if they're in a nonprofit that, you know, promotes social justice. If they are, we do have law enforcement, they have prior law enforcement. And then that's the makeup. There's a community member. So each municipality will take that framework and then drill it down to create their CCRB. So I'll definitely pull it up now. I'm just gonna find it. This is the members. And I do have my chief of staff on, just to let everyone know. Her name is Sakina Cole. Well, she's underneath Assemblywoman. So let's see.
Good evening.
Hello.
Yes, Sakina.
Welcome.
Let's see, members. Just want to get the actual language for you.
Thank you.
All right, so here it is, the municipality, at least three members, depending on the municipality. And here it is. So the residents of the municipality with training or experience in community relations, civil rights, law enforcement, sociology, or relative fields. So that's the makeup. So you take, each municipality would take that composition and then look for recommendations from the community and the government by with the mayor.
Got it. Thank you.
It must be a P member. It must be an ACLU member. It just brought, it broadly, to just drill on that.
Okay.
And also, when it says, well, it says, relations, right, community and experience in community relations. You have citizens who live in, who reside in your community, who probably have twenty years on the block and they have community relations. So they can also fit in there because we didn't want it to exclude anyone. But we wanted it to be broad so that you can take that, that framework and then drill it down on what your municipality will want.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have a question for the Assemblywoman? Councilman Hale.
I muted.
Mute yourself.
Of course I did. Thank you so much for your work on all of this. I, I do have a question about, why not have a civilian complaint review board at the county level and, and instead of the municipal level? And, and so my, my rationale for that is that with the, isn't it, is it possible that, that, given the sort of, I understand the reason for not saying it has to be this member and that member and this member. You know, isn't it, is, is it possible that some municipalities could appoint folks where the civilian complaint review board does absolutely nothing at the local level? But it might seem to me that it might be a little bit more difficult to do that if it was a countywide civilian complaint review board that handled all municipalities within the county. And I'm just wondering if you could sort of help us understand why you decided to focus on it at the municipal level? I mean, you know, Jersey City and Newark, they have more people in their wards than we do in our whole town. So, you know, it's, and I just sort of wonder if, if you could help us understand why you chose it at municipal instead of county level?
It's a great question. And as far as the county, like, just having it at the county level, that particular question that you just asked me has been coming up, has surfaced. And the reason why I did the, the legislation, and it's not just on a municipality level. If, so a municipality can create a CCRB. If a municipality say they don't want to create one, then the county can create one. And then we also have the state. So when you have it as the full county, then you are just negating all of these municipalities who want to have, like, they have their own police force. So why are we, and this is just a, you know, a question that I'm throwing out, and I have, I need some answers to this. Why are we just giving it to the county when the, each municipality has their own police department? So they are policing their police, right? So now we want to have a CCRB. And we tell them, no, you can't have one. The county has to have one. So my, my piece of legislation is at each level. So, and it's a shall. It, it doesn't say required. A municipality can have one. If they don't want to have one, then the, the county will come and pick it up. And then we also have the state, because you have the county, because they have sheriffs. You have the state because there's state troopers. And then you have the municipality with the regular police officers. So if a county doesn't want to have one, if, if a municipality doesn't want to have one, they can use their county.
So you're seeing a, a county CCRB and a municipality within that county could have their own as well?
So, so let's look at Hudson County. I'll just use Hudson County because I'm from Hudson County. So if Jersey City wants to have a CCRB, they will create one, right? They'll create one. But then say Union City, and I'm just picking Union City. Union City doesn't want to have a CCRB. But Hudson County created one because you still have sheriff officers. So if something happens in Union City, then Hudson County CCRB will take over and do what they need to do from a, you know, from a CCRB perspective. But if Jersey City has one and something happens, then the local CCRB will handle that. And not the county, because Jersey City will then have one already.
So you, you mentioned the parallel structure between a CCRB and the, and the Internal Affairs Department. If the county is the one who does the CCRB, is that same partnership that you spoke about at the municipal level for IA? And would that still happen at the county level?
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
And the AG will, you're most welcome. And the AG will have those, they will create the guidelines on how the CCRB and the, and the IA, you know, work together. And that's in the bill that the AG will create those protocols and processes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Elsie, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yes. I want to say it again. Thank you so much for coming out and graciously sharing and imparting a lot of knowledge, bringing a lot of clarity to this. My question was that if there was a count, if we, Island, or Highland Park, created one, and then the county of Middlesex had one, and with that, if we had a complaint, the county does not supersede our complaints. We would still be our entity having our own individual complaint. It wouldn't have to be sent to the county.
No, no, if, no, it would not. If Highland Park, if you have a CCRB in place, or you will handle your, your business. If you don't have one in place, then the county who would have in place, then they will handle it. But if you have one, that's, that's your business. You will handle what you need to handle. You don't have to go to the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ara?
Um, wouldn't, I don't know if there's any research, but it seems to me it would be better for the municipality's residents to be policing their own police than the county who may not know anything about that municipality and the police in that. Is that correct?
And, and I will agree with you. You are absolutely correct. We're building, we're trying to build bridges and relationships with the community and the police. So if you have a county where the county probably don't understand what's, what, you know, what's going on in that community, what are we doing? What are we solving? If we're trying to build relationships, having the county come in to supersede the municipality, to me, I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's right. So I'm still, like, I began to hear whispers about having a county CCRB. So I'm still educating myself and learning about where did that come from and, and why do we need that? And why are we, why do we want to negate the municipalities? The municipalities have their own police force. So you're saying that the municipalities, you know, the community members in that municipality can build a bridge? They have to build the bridge with the county? So I'm still trying to figure that one out myself.
Okay, thank you.
My only, I, I'm, I'm still learning about this as well. I think we're all learning about this as well, but I, at the, at a local level, when there is an incident, it, it seems to me that there is quite possible that there could be lines drawn and sides made very, very quickly. And at the county level, maybe it separates that so that there's a little bit more of a dispassionate look. Regardless of, you know, the, the, at the county level, maybe the fact that they don't know the specifics of a neighborhood or the specifics of an area, the county can look at it in a dispassionate way that maybe a municipality can't. I'm just, that's, that's the question about a, a county board as opposed to a local board. And again, I, you know, we're all educating ourselves on that. But having a civilian complaint review board that is one step removed, and I guess the answer that, you know, the thing to think about is that there are plenty of municipalities that the police can do absolutely no wrong and never will do any wrong for the municipalities. And if you have a civilian complaint review board for a municipality that is not going to think that the police could ever do anything wrong, then, then that, that could be dangerous as well. So.
Elsie?
Yeah, my question is about the subpoena power. We spoke a little bit about that. And I know from our group that we have here in town, the mayor's group, and, which I sit in on once a month when we meet, that we have pulled together information from Newark when we met with Newark and from Maplewood and, you know, trying to pull things together. And one of the things that is, the biggest question is the subpoena power, because they want to be able to look at certain records, which they would not be afforded to now. Do you have any idea of how that would work, or if there was, is there a real movement afoot? If we, if that would actually get passed and move along, so certain members of the board would be able to have subpoena powers and, and see documents without it being redacted?
So the, the Superior Court, they knocked down the Newark CCRB. And they said, in order for you to have, like, in order for you to have those powers, the legislature, the state legislature has to grant those powers. So that is why I added it to the piece of legislation. Because without subpoena power, there's no teeth inside of a CCRB. What, what are you going to look at? If you can't, you know, review tapes and, and eyewitness, talk to eyewitnesses, then what are you going to do? So I'm fighting tooth and nail to make sure that we have full subpoena power. Because it is a directive from the Superior Court. They told, this is what they said. So we shouldn't have to ask them for any subpoena power when they told us this is what the state needs to do.
Yeah. All right, um, Assemblywoman.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I want to thank you again for your time. Um, I will ask the council members if they have any additional questions to funnel them to me and I'll send them to you. Um, and that way you won't be inundated if, if we all start thinking more and more about this. Um, we're, we're anxious to see your legislation move forward. I, I'm going to write to you a little bit too, because I, I have some other thoughts regarding the county versus the municipality. I just don't want to take up too much of your time tonight. So, um, again, thank you for, Phil, were you saying, did you want, did you have your hand?
Oh, no. I just wanted to thank the assemblywoman for her time. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let us know what
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Okay, um, so as I said, if, if anybody has any additional questions for the assemblywoman, please just send them off to me and we'll forward them to her. Okay, we're moving on to downtown redevelopment plan for tracks A through D. And I have Joe Baumann hopefully still on the line. Joe? Okay, thank you.
So Mayor Council, at the last planning board meeting, Terry and I appeared, Jim Constanti made a presentation. And we took a bunch of notes and wanted to come back and report on a few items with the governing body and I'm going to, I'd like to follow this up with a letter to the planning board so we can close the loop on a couple of issues. The first one was under the local redevelopment housing law, when we send the plan to the planning board, they have a deadline of forty-five days from referral to reply back to us. Uh, that deadline expired, I think, yesterday or today. And they obviously haven't replied back. They, um, they have an upcoming meeting in June. Um, and I think it would be appropriate for us to affirmatively, or allow me to affirmatively write to them and say that while the deadline has passed, the governing body is going to delay introduction of the plan until such time with, until our June meeting, with the expectation that we'll get a response back to them at their, from their, at their next meeting, which I think is June 6th. So that was the first one, just the, I don't need a, a vote necessarily, just to make sure that we're all on, we're all comfortable with me. Uh, giving them that letter, which again is, I think we want their feedback. Um, we have a June meeting and they have a meeting before that. So there's, there's no reason they shouldn't be able to get their feedback to us following their, their upcoming meeting. So, um, I'd like to send them a letter and tell them that we were prepared to uh, get their feedback from their next, at their next meeting and then we'll move on the plan. And we'll take into consideration their feedback before we do, but we'll move that ordinance in, in our first meeting in June. That's the first item. Um, there was a, a fair amount of discussion about the pedestrian and bicycle plan. And they, there was a request that we, um, be more explicit in the redevelopment plan, but in terms of making sure that it's referenced and mentioned. And, um, I think, uh, I would recommend that we do that. Um, and so that, I think I would add that to my letter as well. Um, I'm pretty confident that the mayor and council have always supported that bike and pedestrian plan and would have, would expect it to be a part of the planning process anyway. So being more explicit in the plan, uh, I think makes a lot of sense. The other item that we took some notes about had to do with the public space. Um, that's been a source of a lot of discussion, both at our multiple meetings. Um, and it was a big point of discussion with the planning board meeting as well. Um, I know I've had follow-up conversations with, uh, Terry and Jim and uh, it's, it's seems like it would make a lot of sense if we reconsidered the location of the public space um, to the south side of Third Avenue where the town tables are. Um, I think that would resolve a bunch of the issues from a number of, in a number of ways that the location that we were suggesting it might occur in the plan uh, on the north side, um, was bumping up against some property owners around that space, some concerns about access ingress and egress to the, uh, possible garage. Whereas if we move it in the other direction, um, the, I think the census that that's been working pretty well. Property owners that are adjacent to that area, I think it's well received by them. Um, so it seems like a good solution. That's also not a major change to the plan, but because it was such a uh, a topic that was debated a lot. It strikes me that would be helpful to them if we, if I was able to indicate in a letter that the governing body agrees that that would be a preferred location. And then the only other item that was raised is they did ask that, uh, Jim do a more detailed discussion on the Balkan use standards. And so I was gonna, I spoke to Jim, he agrees, that's a good idea. And I was just gonna, um, also advise the planning board attorney that, my expectation that Jim will do that at their next meeting. Um, so I want to just wrap that all up in a letter, uh, to keep the process moving and again, those are the big issues that the, um, we would expect that they would take action at their next June meeting so that we could then introduce a plan after reflecting upon their comments at our June fifteenth meeting. Secondly, that we would, um, we recognize the importance of the bicycle pedestrian path plan and we'll make sure it gets more explicitly included into the redevelopment plan. Again, we've always prioritized the need for the public space and the idea that if we move it across R and N, that would be a better, a preferred location, which I think will lay a lot of concerns that I heard. And I think you all have heard. And then, um, you know, make sure that Jim does a more detailed description of the Balkan use standards. Like, of course, at this point, the public has had the benefit of that plan on the website for, you know, four or five, six weeks, but uh, Jim will still go into it in some detail. So that's a letter I just wanted to send out and I, I'm just raising with the governing body to see if there's any objections or anything else people thinks I should add um, to that, to that correspondence.
I, I would just add that, that those three points that Joe just raised are, are tracked to the three points that the planning board attorney raised as the most significant ones. And so he outlined at the planning board, um, meeting those three issues that, that, that they felt that we needed to address. And I think that Joe's letter and, and that does that, it tracks to what they asked for in many, in many respects.
Hey, I also want to, um, mention that we keep calling this a redevelopment plan. And I think the word plan has been adding confusion in several people's minds. It is really a redevelopment vision. What will come out of this vision will be plans for redevelopment. So there are things that would, that go hand in hand with a redevelopment plan from a redeveloper that, um, don't come at the visioning point of things. Um, so I, I think it's important to understand that as we move forward as well.
Yeah, Mayor. Unfortunately, the statute has plans and projects. And so that's the distinction that the statute draws, which is a plan, which is a vision. In your words, the project is the maybe what people think of as the plan is called a project.
Yeah. Okay, so if there are no other questions for Terry or Matt or Joe, um, we'll move on to the next subject.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thanks. I, I guess, do we want, I never mind. All right, if you don't the, uh, the parking RFP, just I wanted to give a quick status update on that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that would be great.
Um, just, just to let you know that it's out and we've gotten responses and we're in the process of evaluating those responses to the RFP and we hope to be able to make a recommendation to, of course, Mayor Matt as our first line of economic development in contact, but hopefully to council, to, to award. And that would be by resolution. I just, I wanted to mention that because there seems to be some confusion about the process around the RFP and I just thought that might be helpful to add.
Yeah, maybe I should add two points. Uh, so the, 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 the consultant, what we're looking for from the consultant is first a baseline analysis of how do people park in a designated area, which does include some of the neighborhoods because there is concern about what happens, not just on Raritan Avenue, but in the adjacent properties. So, uh, the, the consultant will do a baseline analysis. You know, in part, I think anecdotally, people, we've heard stories of, for example, commuters parking in front of businesses and then walking to the train station. That's not good for Highland Park. Or not being enough spaces, maybe there are, maybe there are not. So we're going to get that baseline done. Um, and from there, we will have them help us make decisions about should we regulate parking? Shouldn't we regulate parking? Um, what's the best way to have people park in Highland Park? In a manner that does what we need it to do, which is not neighborhoods, support the businesses, um, all the, the reasons we need people to park and what's the best way to make that all happen. So um, that's, that will be the goal, like it's all, and finally, that is not a condition precedent to doing our redevelopment vision slash plan.
Right, there's, there's been this idea about the sequencing of getting the findings as of, from this parking consultant as being prior to the redevelopment plan getting adopted. And that's not how the master plan reads, nor is it we think advisable because we also want to evaluate actual projects against some of this, this information, trying to use the new vernacular as accurately as I can. So, um, but I, we, I've heard that theme as well. I think that's what Joe's referring to and we just want to make it clear, we'll be making it clear at the planning board that we are hopefully going to be moving forward, assuming council supports the consultant that we want to recommend. And, but that we're not intending for it to be a contingent on, you know, something in place the results therein before we adopt. We think it's kind of part of the process that we're in. So I just wanted to make that clear as well.
We do have three excellent responses to pick from, so really happy about that as well.
Okay, if there are no other questions on redevelopment, we'll move on to cannabis.
And, and Mayor, I will tell you, Elsie texted me, she got disconnected, so hopefully she'll try to get back in. It should still work, but you'll notice that she stepped off and I believe uh, council, a member, Hirsch, had to step off briefly. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Yeah, over here on the south side where I was just told something popped up that my internet connection is weak.
Oh, interesting. Okay. It could be you and Elsie. We'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed, you Tara.
Okay, so, um, so the cannabis discussion, um, I'm going to ask our borough attorney to talk briefly about the categories that are involved and the deadline date. And then, um, I'm going to ask, um, either, um, Councilman Hale or who's met, I believe, with your Economic Development Committee on this. Okay, great. Very good. So, um, Ed, do you want to start us off with the categories that are involved in the deadline date? And, and then Matt will fill us all in on the discussions that we've been having.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, um, legislation that was adopted in February has six classes of activity for recreational marijuana. Class one cannabis growers license. And that would be somebody, obviously, that would be involved in growing and cultivating cannabis. A class number two is a cannabis processors license. And that would be for facilities involved in the manufacturing, preparation and packaging of cannabis. Last number three would be a cannabis wholesaler's license. And I think that's pretty obvious, obtaining and selling cannabis for later resale. That's number four, is a distributor's license. And that is for business involving transporting and distributing the cannabis. Last number five would be a retailer's license. And that would be the folks who was set up presumably in the central business district uh, to sell to the public, uh, recreational marijuana. And class number six is a delivery license. Um, and that would be businesses like courier services that would be delivering cannabis if you, you know, went online and ordered it. And I guess they would drop it off at your home. And, um, the, the timeline for uh, activity by a municipality is a hundred and eighty days from when this legislation was adopted. Or until August the twenty-second of this summer. A hundred and twenty days is August twenty-one. It's a Sunday, so you get Monday. And there are two things you can do or should do before that deadline. One is you can temporarily, I guess you would call it, opt out of any of the class activities that I just outlined. You did that, it's sort of a placeholder for you to, after the hundred and eighty days comes about, for you to move forward with a licensing process for any of those classes that I just outlined. Was basically a placeholder. And it says to the world that you're not automatically going to fall into doing all of the classes if you do nothing before the twenty-second of August. So if you wait till after the twenty-second of August and you don't do an ordinance either to opt in or opt out, you've effectively opted in for five years. And automatically, stuff like retail sales could automatically happen in your central business district. And automatically be perhaps the cultivation or the warehousing of marijuana could take place in your light industry zone. So whether you want to get in or whether you want to get out, you want to do something, in my opinion, before the twenty-second of August in order to preserve your rights to control what you're going to have to do if you want to permit cannabis to be, uh, in your municipality. So the key date is August the twenty-second. Now, the, 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 um, activity I've been following, and there are really two groups that have been trying to get their hands around what do we recommend, Alfie, that you do? Uh, one is called the New Jersey League of Municipalities. And the other is called the Institute of Local Government Attorneys. And they have been looking at what they are recommending be done. Both of those institutions are recommending that for the time being municipalities adopt a short opt-out ordinance in order to buy some time, in order to put together a complete ordinance after the twenty-second or you could work on it before the twenty-second of August. Or at least if you had an opt-out that stops the clock and you're not automatically signed up to do anything for the next five years. And, and I guess in taking a look at some of the, uh, direction that we've received from both of these organizations so far, candidly, and I've been working with Chris Cessenza because this would be a part of a land use ordinance because we're going to put it in your zoning regulations where you can do things. And it's also going to be a licensing ordinance, very much like an alcoholic beverage licensing procedure. Where you're going to have to establish standards for folk, folks to get licensed in the borough in order to do any one of these six classes of activity. Uh, so it's a combination of a land use ordinance going into the land use code and making either permitted or conditional uses for doing this for, in recreational marijuana. And at the same time have a, a section dealing with the licensing of how you propose to do that. And along with the licensing, you would have to, or you are permitted to develop fees to apply, just like you do when you want to get an ABC license. And there are also provisions in this law, although they don't explain it very well. But there are some, uh, additional, uh, taxes, quote unquote, that municipalities can place on the whole process, whether it's class one through class six.
And, and I'm going to ask you to stop for a second. This is an important topic and I only have three council people on this call here. What happened to, um, Tara, Matt just texted me that he can't come back and Elsie?
I'm guessing maybe the internet I'm guessing maybe the internet problem, because Elsie indicated, I see Tara's trying to log back in.
I'd like to introduce an ordinance to make better wifi on the south side.
I'm on my phone.
Wifi wasn't good in Saraville either, so.
All right.
It's not just Highland Park.
Okay, so we have Tara on the phone.
I just texted Elsie, she should try the same thing. And we know Matt had to step away.
Matt had to step away.
Right. But Matt's on your economic development committee, so he's, you've spoken with him about this.
So I guess the point I'm trying to make is this, that we have this deadline of August the 22nd. You have a meeting on June 15th, and then you'll have another meeting early July. We could certainly invite you to have a special meeting the second or third week of July in order to get things going. The ordinance, if we do an ordinance, other than the opt-out, the opt-out is pretty simple. The other more elaborate ordinance to permit one or more of these classes of activity, where to permit them, how many licenses in each category you want to authorize, what fees to charge, what taxes you want to also charge. I still think you're subject to not greater than the 2% cap, because there's this 2% cap at the municipal level. We would have to clarify how you tack that together so you didn't exceed the 2%. If we wanted to do what I'll call a comprehensive ordinance, get the borough and the business, some of the business or any of the business of doing recreational marijuana before August 22nd. We've got a lot of work to do. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. In terms of creating the licensing side of this ordinance, which we, we could certainly give you a model or recommendations how to do that. But also going to the land use side and, and explaining and figuring out what, what zones you want to permit what to occur. And then since it's a land use ordinance, it has to go to the planning board for their review and recommendation. And they technically have 35 days to do that. And we just heard, we didn't do too well with the other referral over there and back. So I'm not sure how quickly they're going to get their act together to review our, our issue. And, and again, I think you have to recognize, as we heard earlier from one speaker at least, that when it got to the planning board, or even before it did, and you introduced it, it's probably going to be a relatively controversial ordinance. So I mean, I'm sure there's going to be folks to say, let's do it. And there are going to be folks to say, let's not do it. And I think you're probably going to have to take some time to listen to these. Well, you always would take time to listen to your people. And we'd have to decide, for example, the thousand foot rule, you know, the drug zone. The drug zone does not apply to this recreational marijuana. You can, you could authorize places, you could authorize zoning, which would allow a retail operation for closer than 1,000 feet from a school. So it's exempted, it's specifically exempted. And, but it says local municipalities can decide how you want to handle that. Do you want to make it 1,000 feet from, from, from a drug zone? You could do it. If you want to make it 100 feet from a drug zone, you want to forget about the drug zone. You have the right to do that. A lot of these things are really significant substantive decisions, I think, that the governing body would have to make. And then we would have to put in the form of ordinance, and we'd have to have it adopted and published by the 22nd of, of August.
Okay, Matt, do you want to talk to that at all?
Sure, you know, we had a work session about cannabis last, at our last council meeting. And I think the council made it pretty clear, at least my interpretation, that, that we wanted to move forward, that we wanted to, that, that the work that Ed talked about was something that we wanted to begin the process and engage in. And I, I, I think it was pretty clear that that's where the council came down. And I think it's pretty clear that's where most of the, you know, that when you look at the, the vote totals for the legislation, I think there's a lot of support for that. So based on that, we, the, the economic development committee and Stephanie is, is on, and she can speak to this as well, and Matt I think would speak to it as well. We looked at the six different classes and tried to do an overlay of those about what's appropriate and what works in Highland Park. And, and in, in a, in a nutshell, there are several of the classes that logistically, organizationally, space-wise, and, and that, that we, we have some questions about. And those are, are the cultivation, which is class one. It's our understanding that cultivation requires large land area. You know, that it's, it's, which we don't have. And, and as a result, we, we would think that we can, we can opt out of the cultivation. I think that at some point, there's going to be hydroponics that, that we might re, might reconsider. But I think that, I think you could make an argument that, that Highland Park doesn't fit cultivation. Cultivation is going to be more on farms and in big, you know, industrial buildings. So that was one that we, we thought we maybe we should opt out of. The second one is manufacturing, again, for the same reason. You know, manufacturing is, is again requiring big space and big, you know, places to do it. There's also, we've heard some concerns about manufacturing with odor. And, you know, we're a small town, and if there's odors coming out, we thought that that might be of a, of a not something that we wanted to move forward with. And, and so manufacturing, I don't think fits Highland Park particularly well. Same with wholesale. You know, all of those issues are, are, are not that we're necessarily against those businesses. It's just that logistically, those don't seem to make a great deal of sense. And as Ed said, there's a fair amount of work. So rather than try and shoehorn those in, we thought that those might be things for opting out. The, the class four is distribution. Our understanding of distribution is that it's, it's not large 18-wheeler trucks that are coming in. It's, it's smaller trucks that go out and distribute in different areas. That's possible. That could be something, that, that could be something that could work. We do think that there's places to limit that, Upper Raritan, Woodbridge, the light industrial zones on Cleveland, that might be a place that those could be limited in distribution. Class five is retail, and that seems like a no-brainer. That seems like something that we could definitely use and definitely would be helpful to, to Highland Park is, is retail establishments. And we think that those could be both in the central business district, in the commercial zones, Upper Raritan and Woodbridge. We could limit the number of those. I think a number that we came up with that, that might make some sense is 12. Not that we would get 12, but that would sort of be a possibility. Trying not to have a block of them, as I guess was the idea for that. And again, obviously, there's a lot more work, but this is sort of guidance we were hoping could send to Chris and send to Ed. And then delivery. My understanding is that delivery is not something that you can say no to in some respects. You can't, if there's a delivery agency like a, like an Uber for marijuana, they can deliver in your town. You can't sort of say, no delivery in my town. So that's kind of a, there's not really a decision to be made there. I mean, if we had a delivery company, that's one thing, but and, and, you know, I don't know that there's the decision. So, so in essence, with the six classes, you know, we were thinking that, that the ones that require large space, car, big trucks that, that are not for Highland Park are the ones that we ought to opt out of. But we would like to move forward on, on, on the retail, on the distribution, the retail and the delivery as, and, and, and try and position Highland Park to take advantage of those economic opportunities.
I, I just want to clarify something to the rest of the council members. Matt, we talked about retail, but not like retail where there would be actual imbibing of the marijuana. We talked about the purchase of marijuana and then going to your home and, and using it. So I just want to clarify that.
Well, so we're, we're, we're a little unclear of exactly how the imbibing works. Like, like, it's, it's not clear in the legislation exactly. Are they regulated like bars? Are they, like, so, so it's a little unclear. But again, remember, if, if as long as we have things in place prior to this August 20th, we can opt in or opt out later on. If we don't, we're stuck with whatever comes down the pipe for five years. So that's sort of the argument for, for moving, moving ahead. But you're right, Mayor, we did, we did have some questions about, about a, an onsite. I don't know if it's a dispensary, or is it, it's not a dispensary.
Like, it's like, you say, you want our service, yeah.
On premise consumption, think of it.
On premise consumption, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good words, Terry.
Yeah, but that limits, that limits to where business owners will want to come. If I could go, if I could go to New Brunswick where I can sell, I'm growing on one side, they're smoking on one side. I mean, is a one-stop shop. Why would I go to Highland Park and open up a location to just sell? Remember, we had the one applicant that wanted to do multiple, and we were like, no, you can only, you know, that limits.
He wanted, he wanted medical, and then he said, but I also want to be able to sell recreational. He didn't talk about.
On premise.
Talking about distribution, you know, like sales.
Stephanie, I just, I, I do think that you are right, that there is a possibility that on-premise consumption will be attractive to some businesses. And, and so it is something that we would, would definitely have to consider. I don't think that the connection between cultivation, manufacturing and retail are that large. The cultivation, manufacturing, wholesale, you know, they need space more than they need retail outlets. So, so that's not a connection, but, but I, I do see, you know, and, and it, you know, again, we're, we're all trying to come up with the best answer that we can for Highland Park. There are questions about onsite premises that the mayor had and Phil had and, you know, others had. So, you know, that, that is a difficult issue.
I think it's. Hey, Matt, it's Rick.
Yeah.
So the way it was explained to the chiefs was if tobacco smoking is not permitted, then the smoking of cannabis is not permitted. So restaurants, bars, things like that. And, you know, I'm not a business person, but I look at it like, you know, liquor stores that do a lot of business for a certain kind of customer. They want to come in, buy their product and leave versus a bar, which is where they come in, buy a product and sit there and enjoy it. So there's, if you look at it like a bar in a liquor store versus like a cannabis dispensary versus a hookah lounge type situation, you can kind of look at it that way and maybe make some comparisons about what works and what doesn't work. Just kind of a different perspective.
So that, right. And, and, you know, I, I mean, there we allow bars. And so, but, you know, and, and I guess my, my original thought, and I've sort of been going back and forth on this. And so I, I'm, I'd love to hear the whole council discuss it as well as I, I just don't know enough about how the the on-premise consumption would work. Like, is it just like a bar? Can you go and, you know?
Look up, look up what the laws are for a place that allows cigarette smoke. If I understand it right, if you do, like a, like a cigar lounge. But if, but there's 75% of your income or more to your business comes from the selling of tobacco, I think then you can then smoke in that establishment. Don't quote me on that. I, I don't know that to be the absolute truth. But I remember that's what was explained to me at some point, something along those lines. If a percentage of your business comes from the selling of tobacco, then you could smoke tobacco there. It was explained to the chiefs that the, if you can't smoke tobacco, you can't smoke cannabis. Whether that's public property or private property or a business establishment or anything like that.
But there's also a restriction about you can't have on-premise cannabis smoking in a bar. So I, I think there's, there's a.
Right, because you can't have cigarette smoking in the bar.
Right.
Because a business doesn't make that much of its income from the, the sale of the tobacco.
Terry?
I just want to point out also, Chief, and I don't know how this falls into your guidelines that you were explaining, but there is a considerable amount of edible consumption of marijuana, not smoking. And I think that's that, that's why it's, it's cloudy. This, this, this conversation is illustrating work. Oh, gosh, I never mean puns. I always walk into. So the bottom line is, that's, I think that's part of the challenge is not having the rules yet in this particular area. You know, we don't, you know, it's just a lot of unknowns. And I don't know, I don't know what Ed would advise.
And I'm sure there's, there's probably zoning requirements as well. I don't know if they're the same as.
Or we would have to create them. That's what I was talking about.
Look at where they, how close to a school, how far from a religious.
That doesn't apply if you don't want.
It doesn't apply.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I, I think that, that, that onsite premises, the rationale for holding off on that, at least initially, is to try and get some better information about how that might work. Not that we were necess, you know, that we're just not sure exactly, you know, like, like the chief said, is, is smoking okay, but edible's not, you know, and, and we just don't know the answer to that. So maybe holding off on that until we get some more answers, so.
That's, that's a good point, Matt. So, so Ed, I think you have a better understanding of where the council would like us to go now and the categories that we want to explore. So I suppose that Terry and Matt, your economic development committee, will be able to pull some information together and get, start thinking about zoning and our next steps for each of the different things we're talking about here.
Madam Mayor, I think if, if we're going to hit the deadline, I think what I have to do is start working with Chris Cessenza, who is our planning consultant. And work up the, according to the outline you just provided to me, which I understand completely now. And then start working up the land use side of where we would permit the three categories, the three classes that Mr. Hale just outlined. And, and then put in, and also put in the provision that the three classes that we do not want to permit will be prohibited in the zoning regulations. So just like something we don't want to allow to occur. And then where, if I can work with the economic development committee or the administration committee or someone, it's kind of our sounding board, we're going to have to begin to put together the land use stuff. And then as Rick just pointed out, we'll have to amend the smoking ordinance to include or not include the smoking of marijuana. And we're also going to have to come up with a series of regulations in terms of how we're going to license these entities in the different categories. Well, I can certainly draft all those. I mean, they're models that we can find and follow, and we'll take a look at our code. But I'm going to need somebody between meetings so that I can share this information. And I would hope that I could do that maybe through Terry to the economic development committee and get some feedback.
Yeah.
I think it's the only way we're going to hit the deadline.
We're ready to, we're ready to help in any way we can.
Sounds good.
So we'll get, we'll get on it tomorrow.
Great. All right, then I'm going to move on to the next topic, e-scooter ordinance. I hope this is going to be a quick one.
I wanted to read the whole seven pages out loud, if you don't mind, Mayor, or he could everybody. No, I think it's pretty, pretty basic. As you know, and as everybody knows, and we discussed previously, e-scooters were, I don't know if I remember it was authorized, but basically the state of New Jersey, they're, they're street legal in the state of New Jersey. And any, and for any additional regulation is up to each individual municipality. We also have been discussing bringing V O Ride, which are the vendor that is in that Rutgers program into Highland Park as part of kind of the expansion of the Rutgers scooter program, which had started as an e-bike program. So the, the need to regulate the scooters became clear, and the Public Safety Committee has been discussing this issue for a couple of meetings at this point, essentially because we don't want this share program in place without more specific regulations on, on the e-scooters that are in town, which we're already seeing. And I believe Councilwoman Kinshon even writes one from time to time. which we're already seeing, and I believe Councilman Ken Chauhan even writes one from time to time. So the, but the gist of it, if I could boil it down, and I know the chief is also somewhat familiar with this, because we've been working on this collaboratively, essentially is no e-scooters on sidewalks. That's what our, if I had to boil down this ordinance into kind of key themes, as well as, I believe, and now I'm going to get it wrong, so I'm just going to look at it, because I always get confused, limited to ages 17 and up, which is kind of mirrors, I believe, state regulation on helmet wearing and other other policies that are out there, as well as that of New Brunswick and similarly, you know, other places. So that was kind of where we landed in terms of the two big questions that were before the Public Safety Committee to kind of distill. We, as I said, under a separate area, we'll be talking about the VO Ride particulars of the shared scooter share program that if if council approves bringing it in, there'll be a whole contract that regulates how that works in the borough and how they get parked and all that. But this does cover some things about just general e-scooter management, like you can lock them up on bike racks, things like that, and that would apply to all e-scooters, not just ones in the scooter share program. So I guess that's, if I was going to boil it down to a couple of points, that's how I present it. I think everything else follows kind of guidelines that we've seen work in other towns, including New Brunswick, but we also lived in Holmoken and a few other places that have a little more experience with the programs than we do. And we also tried to add, you know, we also kind of simplified some of the enforcement in terms of we're we're not, we're giving warnings initially and very low level of violations for subsequent things, because we really want this to work and just, we want it to be safe. So that's what we're we're looking at. So that's the draft that you have, and we have to go before Ed to, you know, make it in the right format for our ordinance and make sure that the citations are all correct. But I think this is pretty close. And if there's a general comfort with this direction, I would like to give that to Ed to work on.
Yep, okay, everybody okay with that?
Great, and you will be hearing more about the VO next, so hang on to your hats.
Okay, then the next thing is block parties.
Yeah, you wanted me to report out on this, and so I will do so. Essentially, as as everybody heard earlier, we now have a townwide yard sale to look for. A lot of the rules around outdoor mask wearing have lightened up. And the thought was, in light of that, we would be comfortable with permitting block parties this summer and into the fall. However, there will be a little ride around the letter, assuming it gets the normal, it'll go through the normal approvals process within the veil of different departments. However, we're going to put a little note, if for some reason the public health emergency takes a turn for the worse, or we have some concerns, we reserve the right to pull the permit in advance of the event. I don't see that happening, I don't want it to happen, but we do want, and we will remind people to take the proper precautions on their blocks, et cetera. So I just wanted everybody to know that, because I know the clerk's office has been buzzing with that question as well, because people are wondering what's going to happen there. And so that, and and similar would be the case, like I, like I said, with with the townwide. If for some reason in September, something horrible were to happen, we will have to revisit that, but we're going to, we're feeling like we're in a good place and we can move forward without a man as well as the block party.
Okay, thank you. Now, Councilman Hirsch had some some issues going on, so he had to step away. And we will be postponing FNG till the next council meeting. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Back in.
Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone. Be well and safe.
Thank you.